Yeah.
Okay, everyone that's in the public, we'll be starting our regular board meeting at 7:03. So just hang tight for those that are live streaming in. Okay, so if you understand, the beginning part of this meeting, the superintendent runs this part of the meeting because the organizational part for our board policy. I'm the presiding officer. So tonight, I would like to call the Monroe Public Schools Board of Education meeting together. Today is January the 14th, 2025, and the time is 7:04. Jamie, can we please have roll call?
Yes, Mr. Heck.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Here.
Mrs. Myers.
Here.
Mrs. Terasi.
Here.
Mrs. Vincent.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Here.
And can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So to our public, if you would like to make any public comments tonight, please take a paper in the back and fill it out. Turn it in to Jamie so that you can be recognized. At this time, there are no revisions to our agenda, so can I have a motion and support of our agenda for this evening?
I'll make a motion that we support our agenda.
Support.
We have a motion of support on the table. Jamie, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mrs. Terasi.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7-0. All right, to keep things moving along, I have no comments for the first portion. And Jamie, did you have anything turned in for a public address? So at this point in time, we're going to move into our organizational meeting. And so the first thing that the board will need to do is to elect a temporary chairperson. So can I have a motion of support of a temporary chairperson?
I move to elect temporary chairperson Mary Vincent, who shall serve as presiding officer until the election of a president in accordance to bylaw 0151.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion of support for Mary as the temporary chairperson. Any discussion? Fine, hearing none, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Jenkins.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mrs. Terasi.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
All right, the motion passed, 7-0. So at this point in time, Mary will conduct the election of the board president.
All right, so we need somebody to put forth a nomination for our president.
I nominate Tom Heck.
Support.
I would also nominate Mary Vincent.
And I'll support.
Are there any other nominations on the floor? All right, with that being said, do we have a motion to close those nominations? Oh, oh, sorry. My bad. So if more than one person is nominated, board members will state the name of the nominee they prefer in a roll call vote.
So what happens? We do motion to close?
Yes.
The nominations first? So we've done that? Okay.
Well, we haven't done that yet. I tried to call one, but nobody did.
There's no vote, but somebody, you do need to make the motion to close the nominations. So it's just you saying, I motion to close them?
Wonderful.
Yep.
Okay, I move that we close the nominations then?
I'll support.
Okay, and with that said, because we have more than one person nominated, you are, instead of saying yes, you are going to say the name of the person nominated when you cast your vote. Jamie, can we please have roll call?
Yes, Mr. Zimmerman.
Mary Vincent.
Mrs. Williams.
Mary Vincent.
Mrs. Vincent.
Mary Vincent.
Mrs. Terasi.
Tom Heck.
Mrs. Myers.
Tom Heck.
Mr. Jenkins.
Tom Heck.
Mr. Heck.
Tom Heck.
All right. All right, so congratulations to Tom Heck as now our Board of Education President. And Tom, I'm going to slide this paperwork down to you there. You'll have to flip back a couple of pages. I did not do that for you, for the secretary, or sorry, Vice President.
The right chairperson.
Page two, yep.
To the right spot here. Super chair. Okay. We're ready to go. Then our next agenda item is the election of the Vice President. We will now take nominations for the position of Vice President.
I'll nominate Carrie Williams.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, do we have any more nominations?
I nominate Darla Myers.
Do we have support?
I support.
Okay, we have nomination Darla and support, any discussion? Okay, so now, any more nominations for Vice President? Is there a motion to close nominations for Vice President?
I'll make a motion that we close.
Do we have support?
Support.
And we take roll call on that, Jamie?
Yes, I will go through and name everybody individually.
Very good.
So Mrs. Williams.
Carrie Williams.
Mrs. Vincent.
Carrie Williams.
Mrs. Terasi.
Darla Myers.
Mrs. Myers.
Darla Myers.
Mr. Jenkins.
Darla Myers.
Mr. Heck.
Darla Myers.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Carrie Williams.
So by a vote of four to three, we have Darla Myers as our next Vice President of the Board. Okay? Moving on, we have now the election of the Secretary of the Board.
I move to nominate Mary Vincent as Secretary.
Do we have a second?
I'll support.
Discussion? Do we have any additional nominations for Secretary?
I nominate Stacy Terasi.
Do we have a second?
I support.
Any discussion?
I would just, I would just like to share that I would like to think that I've done an okay job as Secretary these last two years. And also, you know, done, I've tried my best to learn as a board member, going to M A S B and earning two certifications and working on my third. Also, you know, trying to represent Monroe Public Schools through state level committee work with Resolutions and Bylaws Committee. So I would hope that I've done a good job as your Secretary these last few years and that I could continue that work. I would be really happy to do so.
I'd also mention that Mary's been on the state level Resolutions and Bylaws Committee, the M A S B. She's been on our Board for over two years. She's also earned her Level One Certified Board Award, her Level Two Award of Merit for Data Skills Specialty Certification and Advocacy Skills Specialty Certification. So I would like to commend you on all of those because they take extra time. You have a full-time job, you're a wife and mother, and you put in many hours here with our Board and above and beyond to do that. So thank you.
Thank you for reading my resume.
Any further discussion? Okay, can we have a vote on closing the nominations? We're just going to vote?
Well, no, we have to.
Yeah, we have to close. We have to close.
Yep, have to close. I'll make a nomination that we close. Or Secretary.
Support.
Support, okay.
Mr. Jenkins.
Stacy Terasi.
Mrs. Myers.
Stacy Terasi.
Mrs. Terasi.
Stacy Terasi.
Mrs. Vincent.
Mary Vincent.
Mrs. Williams.
Mary Vincent.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Mary Vincent.
Mr. Heck.
Stacy Terasi. And Stacy Terasi is our new Secretary as a vote of four to three. Okay? We will now take nominations for the position of Treasurer of the Board.
I nominate Gary Jenkins for Treasurer.
Do we have support?
Support.
I will nominate Mary Vincent again.
Support.
Support. Any additional nominations for Treasurer? If not, then we will take a vote?
Yes, Mr. Zimmerman.
Mary Vincent, but don't we have to close it first?
Oh, yeah.
Please certainly do.
Okay, motion, do I have a motion to close the nominations?
Close the nominations.
I'll support.
Okay.
Now you can go with the vote.
Okay, now we'll go with the vote.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Mary Vincent.
Mrs. Williams.
Mary Vincent.
Mrs. Vincent.
Mary Vincent.
Mrs. Terasi.
Gary Jenkins.
Mrs. Myers.
Gary Jenkins.
Mr. Jenkins.
Gary Jenkins.
Mr. Heck.
Gary Jenkins. And by a vote of four to three, Gary Jenkins is our Treasurer. We will now take nominations for the election of Parliamentarian.
I nominate Mary Vincent to be Parliamentarian.
I decline, thank you.
Do we have other nominations for Parliamentarian?
Well.
I nominate Carrie Williams.
Do we have support?
I'll support.
Any other nominations for Parliamentarian? Do we have a motion to close the nominations for Parliamentarian?
I'll make a motion to close for Parliamentarian.
Do we have support?
Support.
We can take a vote now for, I guess it's only one candidate?
It would just be roll call at this point?
Okay.
So it's a yay or nay. So Mr. Jenkins?
Yay.
Mrs. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Terasi?
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes. So Carrie Williams is our new Parliamentarian of the school Board.
Mary, Carrie, you will love it.
Carrie. Sorry. Okay, our next agenda item is election of the School Board Liaison Representative to the Monroe County I S D. Do we have?
I move to nominate Mary Vincent, School Board Liaison to the I S D.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we have other nominations for the liaison to the I S D?
I, I will nominate Gary Jenkins.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Support.
Can I just withdraw my nomination, please? I'd like to decline my nomination. Thank you.
Okay. Any other nominations for liaison to the I S D?
Move to close nominations?
I'll second that.
Okay. Can we have a roll call on that, Jamie?
Yes, Mrs. Myers.
Gary Jenkins.
It's just yay or nay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting on a thing here, yes.
Mrs. Terasi?
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent?
No.
Mrs. Williams?
No.
Mr. Zimmerman?
No.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Okay, Gary Jenkins is now our representative to the I S D. The next agenda item is to establish dates, times, and location for the Board of Education meetings. Do we have a motion? The agenda or the schedule has been distributed in your package?
It's the same schedule as it was last year. It is protecting the second Monday of the month as a workshop, work session, and then the second Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday of the month, a workshop at the beginning at 5:30 with the board meeting at seven. And as you can see, in the month of January, there are two meetings, the month of February, two meetings. Month of March would have one meeting because of spring break is last week. Month of April is two meetings, May, one meeting again because we have Memorial Day in there. June, two meetings, July is a one-meeting month, August, two meetings, September, two meetings, October, two meetings, November is one meeting, and December is one meeting.
Are we having discussion without a motion?
No, he's telling you what it is.
Yeah, just the explanation.
I move to approve the 2025 Monroe Public School Board of Education calendar as proposed.
Do we have support?
Support.
Now discussion? Any further discussion?
I just want to make note that in 2020, this takes it down to 19 meetings, 19 board meetings. We have had 21. In 24, we had 21. In 23, we had 21. And in 22, we had 22. So this is a downward trajectory of school board meetings, and I would like to look at the calendar to not lose two more board meetings because of scheduling. I think that we can work a schedule out, that we can ensure that we do not lose two more board meetings. And that's what I would like to do.
Just one moment on that. We had 21 scheduled last year. However, due to graduation week, we didn't hold our second meeting in May. And then due to Thanksgiving, we did not hold one week of Thanksgiving. So we actually did only have the 19 last year.
So I understand that those meetings got canceled, and that was the prerogative of the Board President to cancel those meetings. But those meetings were on the calendar and they were scheduled, so I would like to have the meetings on the calendar as scheduled during those unless it's actually on a holiday because the Thanksgiving break was literally days before Thanksgiving. And I, I know everybody was working, so I'm not quite sure why we can't continue to do our job just because it falls in the same week as a holiday. Now, if it falls on the holiday, I think that's what December is or something. I can understand that, but I would like 21 meetings on the calendar as, and then if someone would like to make a decision down the road to change or, or cancel them, then there's a prerogative to do so. But if they're not on the calendar, the only way to get it on is a special meeting, and you can only hold one topic typically on those.
So you are, as a Board of Education, you are required to have one board meeting a month per law, is the minimum requirement.
And I would, again, like to continue with the calendar that we've used in the past of 21 board meetings. So we can look at the dates that would need to go back on, or, or we can postpone this to another time. I mean, I'm not quite sure what.
It's your schedule of board meetings as a Board of Education, it's not mine.
Right, and I am making a suggestion that we, this is not the same calendar because there's only 19 meetings. There's not 21.
Do you, do you have a proposal to amend the calendar?
But then if you count all these Monday meetings, that would.
They are board meetings. I'm just talking about board meetings, scheduled board meetings. So we can take a look at the dates. So let me get my notes here. So in March, the spring break, so the meeting in March would be the 25th, which falls directly on spring break. So there would be an opportunity to try to rearrange and have, we would have the back-to-back board meeting that month. So then in May, if that's a better month, that falls, what's the green? Oh, school break?
No, that's, the green's representing that, that's the week right there of graduation week.
Okay, so what, but graduation isn't until Friday?
Memorial Day is Monday.
Yeah, that this would be Tuesday.
But there's multiple graduations that we.
So there's a graduation.
Baccalaureate.
So let's go to May. Oh, that is May, I'm sorry, July. So in July, the meeting would have been the 8th and the 22nd, and someone moved it to the 15th. We could take that and move it back to the 8th and the 22nd. So that would add one back in if we add it to July. November, the meeting would fall on the 25th, and that's two days before the Thanksgiving break. And I believe school is still in session until the 28th?
No.
No. What day?
Wednesday.
26.
Okay, so we would still be operating on the 25th. So I would suggest adding back the 25th. So that's the two I suggest is the 25th in November and 8th and 22nd in July. Did I miss something?
Well, I guess, Darla, I think you need to, to make a motion as to what you want to adjust.
Well, there's already a motion on the table, so I would like to amend the motion.
Okay.
So I would like to amend the motion that's on the table to have.
I can't amend his motion now.
He has to.
I would have.
Well, yes, you'll approve it, yeah.
Right.
He has, someone would, I'm making it, someone can approve it or not approve it, remember?
He would have to.
Right.
Agree to amending it.
Yeah, she has to make the amendment first.
So then I'm going to postpone, and I'm going to make a motion to postpone this decision to another date so that we can open more discussion on it. Because other than that, it's shutting down discussion.
I won't be here the week of Thanksgiving, so I won't, I won't be able to be there.
Can I caution with postponing it as well? We have to set a calendar.
Yes, you have to.
So.
So we'll continue discussing.
But don't we have to vote on the motion that's already on the table?
Or she has to go to amendment first. If she wants to change it, she puts out an amendment. And we can either vote, and you have, if she puts out amendment, you can either approve or disapprove it because you're the.
I, I actually looked this up, and Mary, I know you've taken Parliamentarian classes, so maybe you can reiterate this. When a, when a motion is made, you actually vote on the second motion first. So the second, the first motion on the table is let's accept it as is. The second motion that would be on the table would be, let's add two meetings back in. So you vote on the motion to add two meetings back in. If that motion fails, you go back to the original motion that's sitting there open. Because I've been trying to make sure that, like, some of this stuff that we're making sure we're following Robert's rules and we're following our own policies on that, and, and so that's, you go back in order.
Right, right, but if you're amending the motion, the originator of the, of the first motion has the option of denying the amendment or approving the amendment.
Okay, so then I'm not going to amend the motion. I'm going to make a motion to postpone the calendar until.
We can't.
We can. We can do, we can. Yes, we can.
Because we won't have another board meeting if we postpone.
That's right.
We can, we can accept it. So, so here's what I'm hearing. We either accept 19 meetings or we don't have a calendar. Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
Then let's solve this problem.
Then you need to.
I think when the calendar got set, someone should have notified us that they bumped it down to 19. I had no email, so I couldn't email you. You know that. I didn't have an email. I couldn't, I couldn't email anybody.
Just so everybody's familiar, Policy 154 says, "We shall designate a daytime place for regular meetings which shall be held at least once every month." So that's shall, we need to set a schedule tonight.
So I would like to add two meetings to the schedule. And it sounds like unless Larry agrees, we don't get to do anything.
You are holding us hostage if that is what you are expecting us to do right now. You are unwilling to concede that our policy, that our, what Tom just read says we have to have one a month. You are now saying that we are not going to move forward unless we go to 20.
No, what I said was.
Which is 12.
What I said was, I would like to put the two meetings back in that were pulled off the calendar when it was made this year. And so that's what I'm requesting. I'm asking for those two meetings to be put back on. That's all I've done. That's all I've done. You can agree or not agree, that's perfectly fine, but that's my request, and that's why I'm making that request.
Can't we just have Larry withdraw his proposal and start from scratch?
Is there support?
Darla, make a motion, make an amendment to the motion, and then Larry gets to decide whether it goes forward or not.
Okay, I would like to amend the motion to go from 19 meetings to 21 meetings by adjusting the July calendar to the 8th and the 22nd and the November 25th meeting. That adds the two in.
That's my motion.
Do we have support for that?
I'll support it.
Okay, Larry, as you originated the motion?
I'd say we let the motion that we made go on through, and then if it fails, then we will go to the 21.
Then you can make your own motion.
Okay, so Jamie, let's have a roll call vote on the motion.
On the original motion.
I would say we are voting on Larry's motion, just for clarification.
Right.
To approve it as it was presented, presented, excuse me.
I didn't hear what you said, somebody coughed.
So right now, we are voting on the motion you made.
Right.
So I called your name for a roll call vote.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent?
No.
Mrs. Terasi?
No.
Mrs. Myers?
No.
Mr. Jenkins?
No.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
I don't know.
The motion failed.
And now you can make your motion for the calendar that you want.
The most, the motion has failed three to four. Do we? Do we have addition, new motion on the floor?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the 2025 Monroe Public School Board of Education calendar as written with the addition of the July eighth and twenty-second being meetings and November twenty-fifth to constitute twenty-one board meetings for the year.
Do we have support for that?
Support.
Discussion.
I don't think that a meeting on the twenty-fifth will work becau, on November the twenty-fifth will work because there are so many after-school events the week before Thanksgiving. That's because there's typically band choir orchestra events. There are typically awards events. There are typically sporting events that are happening then. It is a very busy time of year. A board meeting happening then will be in competition with those other school events happening. So my recommendation would be not to have a meeting on the twenty-fifth just because we would have very, very low participation from our community. And an important component of board meetings is community engagement. That's all. That's all I wanted to say. It was just a comment. I'm not making an amendment. That's just a comment.
I will not be there on that night.
Okay.
I will be in Florida with the band.
Okay. So I'm, we can always make a decision like we did this year. If there is a conflict and the board meeting doesn't appear like it's going to be, they can always be canceled. It's just like we did last year. And that becomes a decision at the time that the board president and superintendent can address.
It doesn't hurt having it on the calendar.
Yeah.
Doesn't hurt it at all. And I assume everything that Mary said is probably true.
Well, the band trip is.
You know, and then that first, that first meeting in November, we know all this, cancel that meeting. But at least it's on the schedule.
Would the work session on the fourteenth also have to be adjusted? To the seventh?
Of July, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Monday after a holiday weekend.
Yeah. And that's just, we, we hold that doesn't necessarily mean we would have a special board meeting.
Sure.
Right. We're just holding that.
To bring.
Any further discussion? Jamie, can we have roll call on that?
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrassi?
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent?
Sure.
Mrs. Williams?
No.
Mr. Zimmerman?
No.
And the motion passes by vote of five to two. The next agenda item is board member compensation. And this is informational only. The board members should, should look in their packet. They have a form to submit as to whether they are going to accept compensation or not take compensation. So please look at that, complete the form and mark the appropriate decision for your personal decision. Next is reports, contracted service reports. Resignational, I think that's just informational as well, is that correct, Larry?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Next is the consent agenda. Do we have any adjustments to the consent agenda?
Yes. I would like to remove and move it to, was it new business? Eleven B, Appointment of Signatures. Eleven D, Appointment of General Counsel. And eleven F, I think it's a signature thing. I didn't actually write that one down. So it's B, D, and F.
Do we have support?
I'll support.
Any discussion?
Can you please explain?
Sure. There were questions that were, I know I brought up one last night. And there were other questions to, I thought that would be discussion. And eleven F, my only thought of that was there's not a backup person. Like, there's no backup person written in. And that's a pretty important process. And so I just wanted to address that as well.
Wait. So. Hold on. B, we talked about last night. D, Appointment of General Counsel? We didn't talk about last night. Can you share why we're pulling that for new business?
So if I understand the policy correct, when it comes to a consent, a consent agenda, they get moved and they get to new business and we open discussion there. And I'm more than happy to go through it all when we get to new business. That being said, I move to approve the agenda items B to A. Oh, it's not eleven A. It's B, eleven A, and eleven J without eleven B, eleven D, and eleven F removed and approve the rest of the consent agenda as written.
So which ones did you pull up?
B, D, and F.
Do we have support for that?
He already supported.
Yeah, good point. Okay.
I just clarified the motion.
Okay. Thank you, Darla. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Jamie?
Mr. Zimmerman?
Ah, yes.
Mrs. Williams?
No.
Mrs. Vincent?
No.
Mrs. Terrassi?
Yes.
Mrs. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes. So the consent agenda minus eleven B, eleven D, and eleven F?
Correct.
Has been approved by vote of five to two. That's a good question. Do we have any new staff here available to be recognized?
We have two individuals here. Our first one is our new ELL teacher at Monroe Middle School. Her name is Annalise Ringle. And we're going to have, let me introduce the second person. We're going to have you come up and tell us about yourself. And if you brought anyone with you, and then we're, the board will agree you, okay? But, so that's Annalise. And then the second person that's here is Ethan Judd.
Larry, come on up.
Yeah.
Let's meet you.
Is Ethan Judd here? Mister, the guy, you. Are you someone I should know?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, okay. I thought, damn, I could have asked you.
Ethan Judd? I'm like, I'm not Ethan.
The other guy's naked.
Okay. Ethan is not here. Annalise Ringle is. Annalise, it's like, and I apologize. Because I'm faking it there.
How do I talk into this thing?
You got out of this, honey.
I didn't know I have to say anything. But before this position at the middle school, I was an ESL teacher at a high school in Toledo for three years. And I feel very blessed to have gotten the job at the middle school. I'm very passionate about ESL. And I really look forward to getting to know the kids more and more and be able to support them academically and emotionally. Yeah, I'm very happy.
So you're going to come over here.
Okay.
Welcome to Monroe.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Oh.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome, board.
Welcome.
All right. Congratulations to our new hire and to all of our new hires this evening.
Okay, we will now move into new business. I want to provide some background and context to our agenda items. All items on our agenda have been either discussed in depth at a prior work session or have been addressed in our weekly board briefs. So if it might seem that we moved quickly through some items, we want the public to know that we have thoroughly done our due diligence and review prior to this meeting tonight. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Shook for a description on item twelve A, which is bid pack number seven.
Thank you, President Heck. Tonight, we are asking the board to move to award the following base bids. One hundred and twenty-six thousand from Blue Star Inc. for bid category zero-two A. Seven hundred and twenty-five thousand from The Speaker Company for bid category zero-six A. One hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred dollars from Alacore Inc. for bid category zero-eight A. One hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars from Pontiac Ceiling and Partition Inc. for bid category zero-nine A. Twenty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars from Premier Tile Design Inc. for bid category zero-nine B. Forty-nine thousand from Artistic Tilestone for bid category zero-nine C. Five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars from Monroe Plumbing and HVAC for bid category two-three A. Seventy-three hundred dollars from Fisix for bid category two-three E. Six hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars from Lab Electric Company for bid category two-six A. One hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars for general conditions for Clark Construction and two hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars for construction contingencies. The total bid package number seven approval is not to exceed two million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and will be funded from the 2020-2023 Bond Capital Projects Fund.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on bid pack number seven?
Motion to support bid pack number seven as presented by Ms. Shook that the total will not exceed two million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars that will be funded from the 2020-2023 Bond Capital Projects Fund. Support.
Any discussion?
So I thought there was a 2020 bond fund. Like, what am I missing on the twenty-three?
That was the series two.
Okay, so it's not anything to do with the bond, just the way it's written?
Because we had two issuance is in that bond mileage. So it's just indicating series one was 2020, series two is 2023.
Okay.
Correct. There was no new, anything approved by the board members at this.
Did I forget something? So, no, thank you.
And this is for Orchard and Raisenville Secured Entry and Related Renovations.
Yeah. Safety related. Any further discussion? Jamie, can we have roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrassi?
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes. And it passes by a vote of seven to nothing. Okay. Under new business, then we will go back to the items pulled off the consent agenda. We will start with the item eleven B from the consent agenda, Appointment of Signature Authorization. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we support the Appointment of Signature Authorization.
Have support?
Support.
Discussion.
So I know yesterday, Cassie, we talked about these appointments of signatures. And I was like, wow, I didn't know that people in the district could write checks. And so we went through that and you were very kind to kind of fill me in on that process. So I went back and looked at it because I was like, how did I not notice that before? So I went back and looked. In twenty-two and twenty-three, there was no such thing. There was not, this was not included in the, in the same language. That wasn't there. But it did start in 2024. And I will have to admit, I missed it in 24. I didn't realize we were starting a new process and issuing checks to people within the district. So am I missing something here? Because it was not in, I went through the originals.
I believe when Mr. Shaw and I discussed it this time last year, we caught that previously it had missed those several administrators that do sign checks at some of the buildings. So that was not a new process that was implemented last year. That's been ongoing. We just corrected the board's motion.
Yeah. Because when I went back to January 2022 and I had looked at the organization meeting and the proposal, that was not on there at all. No names were listed. And then in twenty-three, there was also not.
No names listed on this one either. It's just positions.
That's how I, well, I meant positions, excuse me. There were no positions listed on those two previous. So it appears that the first time it came up was in 24. And so I wasn't sure what led to that, how that came to be, and, you know, what the process is for that. So that was the reason I pulled it for discussion on, you know, if it started last year and we didn't have a conversation about it, that's bad on me because I didn't catch it. But I just wanted to know kind of how that came to be and why now. But.
Yeah, as I indicated, that was ongoing. It wasn't new last year. We just reflected the motion appropriately for the individuals within the districts that have been and hopefully continue to be depending on the board's action of this particular agenda.
So who, so what of those positions were not included in the previous year of 24? That you're indicating you added new this, to this year?
We didn't add new. It was missed on the previous motions. Nothing changed in our process internally. The motion was incorrect in years prior to 2024.
Oh, so it just was never.
Correct.
On there. And you added it on there, but it just appeared new to me? Okay.
Right.
Okay, that makes sense.
It was just corrected to accurately reflect.
Right.
Who has been signing checks within the district.
Okay. And we talked about getting a rundown of what's going on and, or not what's going on, but just how that works. Okay, thank you, Cassie.
There will be something in board briefs for you guys to review on that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any additional discussion? Jamie, can we have roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Terrassi?
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes. And the motion passes seven to zero. And next, we will address.
Appointment of General Counsel.
Yes. Eleven D, Appointment of General Counsel. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint General Counsel.
Support.
Discussion.
Under new business, I always thought we discussed it before we made a motion. But anyway, so the reason I asked for this is because we currently have, and I could not email questions because my email was totally not working. But we have currently three contracts. And if I'm correct, it's negotiations, it's. Yeah, please. I had them written down here, but, yeah. So don't we currently have three contracts that we're working under?
We have two current contracts right now. So that were approved two years ago at the organizational meeting, two, exactly two years back, give or take a day, depending on what it was. So the, the labor retainer is a flat fee. And so, as I expressed then, so I don't mean to share anybody else's business now, but I told the board then, I don't mind saying it now. We only offer that arrangement to two of our clients, our two longest-standing clients, Monroe Public Schools and Grand Blank Public Schools. Everybody else, we just charge the hourly rate for. But because of the long-term relationship, we just charge a flat fee to do all of the negotiations and internal labor matters, just as a courtesy. And then the other is the general purpose contract, which was five years. So we have three years left on that contract for all other work.
Didn't you provide us with three contracts, Andy?
Oh, the student discipline was a separate, I can, I talk about that as a rider rather than a separate contract. But I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I can call it a separate contract, no problem.
It's just the way it was listed in this information?
Student discipline for many years. So I've been working for the district for almost twenty years, which is hard to believe. But for many years, student discipline hearings were charged at the flat hourly rate. And we suggested two years ago in conversation with Mr. Shaw that that was an area of efficiency, that you didn't actually need me at all of your board hearings for student discipline. And that was something that could be probably separated out and dealt with in a smaller session. And so the student discipline rider basically says, we'll be available for, again, that fee up to, I believe it's currently twelve times per year. We'd been doing twice a month around the school year for a number of years. And it was getting very expensive. And it was getting very expensive. And frankly, most of your student discipline, sometimes you want a lawyer because the family brings a lawyer, it's sensitive, or they're in jail, or things like that. But most student discipline, you handle without a lawyer at the table. And so we parceled that out at that time in recognition that there was an inefficiency that could be made and you could save money, frankly. So that's why we did that.
Yeah, and I know at the time, we all supported that. And it makes sense, and I'm assuming it's still an efficient way to do things.
I think I've only been here, what, four times so far this year? And we're about halfway through the year, so yeah.
Yeah, but the way that, way that it's included in the consent agenda, the language is to represent as General Counsel. But if you look at the language of the three documents that we were provided, it's, they aren't listed as General Counsel under each of those categories. So last time, we approved them all separately. I included them all in a motion, because remember, I made, ended up making them all. But this doesn't list out to say, hey, we got three things working together to, that is part of what you provide. And I just thought maybe that would be beneficial to have that included in there.
Sure, I have no objection to that. I think it's probably presented on the agenda that way just because the General Counsel is the only one that's legally required and policy required. So your policy 172, I know you're fluent on the policy. I'm pretty sure it's 172.
It is.
Is aligned with? Is aligned with the revised school code, which just says you have to have a General Counsel. And then you can make all these other arrangements if you want to, which we have. They're not prohibited. But that's probably why it's the only one that was on the agenda, is it's the one that's required.
So we don't have to vote on any of the other ones?
You don't have to. I don't mind if you do, but you don't have to legally.
I'm just trying to follow along here. I just want to make sure that what we're doing is following what we were doing and we're not missing anything.
Legally and policy wise, it's, you just have to let, and it's a public accountability measure. You just have to let the public know that you're not flying blind, that you do have an attorney on retainer that you can call when you need, so.
Yeah, per policy 172, just that we have legal representation.
So we, we're good just leaving in the language the way it is?
My opinion, yes.
I'm just throwing it out there because we did put them separate last year.
So I'm satisfied as the other side of the party to the contract with that. Either way, whichever you prefer, I believe we have three years left on the existing relationship.
That's correct.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Jamie, can we have roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Terasi?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes. And the motion passes seven to zero. Next, on the new business agenda is from the consent agreement agenda, is item 11F, Corporate Resolutions and Facsimile Signatures. Can we have a motion?
I move to approve the following corporate resolutions of facsimile signatures as recommended for the 2025 calendar year. And I'm not going to read through all of those, but that's my motion.
Thank you. Support?
I'll support.
Discussion?
So I might have grabbed the wrong one because there was a, there was a, in the packet that went out, it's in the same packets. So maybe I grabbed them wrong. There was listed that, Cassie, you, you handle the business of what it is. But in, it's like an important job. Everybody's got an important job. Everybody's going to be missed. Because it's financial, they didn't list anybody as to, if you, for some reason, are unable to do that, who else is authorized to be able to do that? That was my question on that.
You're talking about letter A?
Probably.
I think you meant letter A.
Probably.
And technically speaking, the board treasurer would be the alternative person that could technically, if I was unable to perform those duties, they would have the same ability to do so.
Okay, yes, thank you, Carrie. Because I'm reading it and I'm like, I don't know if I have the right one, but.
That was already voted on.
Yeah, but that's all right. That was my only thing, is do we have a backup? And it just caught my attention, so thank you.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Jamie, can we have roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Terasi?
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent? Mr. Heck?
Yes. And the motion passes seven to zero. Next agenda item is old business. We have no old business tonight, so I'll turn it over to Superintendent Shaw for superintendent comments.
All right, well, thank you very much, sir. Tonight is, we are recognizing our Board of Education in the month of January. And so last week in our Monday mingle, we remind everyone that to please recognize our board during this month right here. We appreciate all that they do. It is a tough job to do this in a school district. Winter weather, for those of you that drove around today, the winter weather finally arrived. And we were fortunate, you know, that it was during the middle of the day. And then by the time we dismissed, it was clear. Do know that, obviously, we're up early, we're watching the weather. The one big one that everyone wants to know, especially going into next week, is it's minus 15. Okay, so if you're wondering, what's the negative temperature need to be for us not to have school in Monroe County? It's minus 15 regular temp and/or wind chill. Now, wind chill is sustained. It's not like all of a sudden you have a gust and then a minute later, it kind of settles down, then five minutes later, you have another gust. It has to be a sustained wind chill of minus 15, okay? And so for Monroe Public Schools, I use, just for complete clarity, I use Weatherbug, that's grabbing the airport here in our own community as the piece of information that I use right there for ourselves. But know that, then whenever possible, if we can make a determination the night before, we do. Okay? As I was telling people earlier today, when it comes to temperature, generally, our meteorologists get that one right. Snowfall, on the other hand, not so much, okay? Prediction of times, not so much. But the temperature, they tend to. So temperature is a lot easier for us as superintendents. But, you know, that prediction of weather and weather coming in is a tough one. And so we're paying attention to it. It is a difficult decision because like, for example, now, we've gone just, I think it's like 1,000 in like 35 or 40 days where we haven't, we've only had two snowfalls greater than two inches, okay? And so when we think about the amount of times that all of us in the room have driven on anything, and then we think about our kids that have any opportunity, they don't. And so there most likely will be a day where school will get called, and it's not going to have anything to do with depth and breadth of the snow that we're going to get through. Has everything to do with our kids have had limited to zero practice and driving in those conditions.
In Michigan yet.
In Michigan yet. And, but it's just been strange, you know, when we look at these last two or three years right here. So a lot goes into that. This week is winter fest. And so high school is busy with everything going on out there and dress up days and everything like that. This Friday night, they'll have their games. And then Saturday night is the dance. Reminder that this coming Monday is no school for Martin Luther King Junior Day, and that is offices and school. And then on the 20, Friday, January 24th, is a half day for students, end of the first semester. And then this is a really cool one right here. Early middle college applications for Monroe Public Schools, early middle college program began Thursday, so we put communications out there. So remember to talk to our kids. And when you know about our early middle college, it is an exceptional, exceptional program. So that's all I have for my comments tonight, sir.
Thank you, Superintendent Shaw.
Jamie, was there any public commentary turned in?
No, I have not received any.
Okay, since we have no public commentary tonight, board member commentary? Do any board members want to speak?
Yes. So I would like to suggest to the board for their consideration that we possibly remove our parliamentarian rule position this year. Just because we're the only Board of Education that has a parliamentarian, normally those fall to the secretary. Those obligations, those duties fall to the secretary. So I would just like to put it out there that possibly we follow other, what other institutions in our region, other institutions across our state are doing. And we consider not having a parliamentarian position and that we just have our four officer positions and three trustees.
I would agree with that. I think a parliamentarian duties really are all of our duties. We should all know the rules, the ways to do business and conduct the business. So that should be everyone's job, not just one person.
And I believe I was trying to find the officer policy, but I believe it is not required.
Parliamentarian is included.
155.
Do I have 154?
It does say shall.
I don't have that memorized.
Shall elect a parliamentarian, so.
We'd have to change.
We would have to amend the policy.
We can?
Yeah.
We can?
And so?
At this moment, I would like to bring that policy as one of the ones that we consider revising in the very near future.
Okay, so at our next policy review, we will add that to the list and consider amending that policy. Thank you, Mary. Any other board member commentary?
Cannot, right? I just want to thank everybody. I want to thank everybody for coming. It's been a pleasure serving on this board for the past two years. And I just want you to know, I look forward to the next two years. A lot of stuff happens, a lot of stuff comes up. But I think one thing we did well as a board is we worked together. And I look forward to that continuing.
Stacy, any comments?
No comment at this time.
Gary?
No, I'm fine, I'm good.
Gary? Just to kind of wrap it up, I look forward, I think, the next two years. Obviously, as we've talked about over the past couple of years, academic performance is our number one priority, bringing Monroe Public Schools up to where a more respectable level in the state and in the county. So we have a lot of work to do, but I think we've got a very good staff. We had some good news last night with the achievement scores from the latest assessments. And we hope to keep building on that through the next year to two years. Okay.
So before we amend, sorry, not amend, adjourn this meeting, I do, because it is Board Appreciation Month, I do have a couple of things I would like to give out now that we're done. So if I could take one second, Tom?
Sure, thank you, go ahead.
So again, to make sure we get this recorded right. So in appreciation of all that you do, we do have a wonderful certificate you get to put on your wall at home or in your office or wherever you'd like, and a wonderful gift. So Mary Vincent, appreciate all that you do for Monroe Public Schools. Carrie Williams, if you could come on over. All right. Larry Zimmerman? Gary? Stacy Terasi, thank you. Darla Myers, thank you. And then Mr. Thomas Heck. Jamie, thank you very much, sir. All right. And so Jamie's helping me out right there, making sure to pass out these. Please make sure you do not leave them here in the boardroom. Actually, I take it back. When you open it up, some of you may leave it in the boardroom. We'll kind of let that leave it there, so.
Always this coffee, life is.
You'll get the joke here in a second. Let's close in here.
Okay, that includes our agenda for this evening. Our next Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 28. Will begin at 7:00 PM as usual.